Order, start off with roll call to my left.
Brian Schwan, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Troy Tabor, council member.
Ben Lawrence Mayer.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warrington, council member.
Buck Buchanan, police department.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCoslin, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of public works.
Paula Bab, deputy city clerk.
Susan Reiner, city clerk.
Mark Deiter, city administrator.
Item three is the invocation this evening. I see Pastor James Gillespie with Andover Baptist Church. Thank you for joining us.
Let's bow our heads and prayer. Dearly Father, Lord, we come to you this evening, Lord, and we ask that all the business done here is business that glorifies you. Lord, we do pray for our community, pray for our schools. For those who keep us safe in the fire and police departments, Lord, we pray that you watch over them and their families. Lord, we also lift up the council members and those who serve the city. Lord, we just pray that you watch over them and their families. Lord, we just ask for a blessing in this meeting, and again, may it glorify you. Lord, we love you, we praise you, and we thank you. It's in the name of your son, Jesus, that we pray. Amen.
Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Once again, this is the public forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seen none. We'll move on to item six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. Am I correct not seeing any additions here this evening?
No, sir, no additions.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by C.R., second by Mike, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. We have a series of presentations here this evening. We'll start off with inviting Artie to the podium.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity today to present as part of our grant obligation that we got from the city. Pictures say a thousand words, so we're rolling this, and I just have a few updates to give you.
Can I get your name first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kim Austin.
Thank you.
Do you need my address too? Okay. In 2018, from January to April, we acquired the final approvals, cleared and grubbed preparation for the trail development, delivered and laid trail materials, graded, packed, and rolled four miles of the Red Bud Trail in Butler County from Prairie Creek Road to Highway 400. It was a busy year. From May to December, the trail was open for use. We had a formal ribbon cutting event. We performed routine trail maintenance, and we added more trail material where there was normal trail compaction and settlement that had occurred. Other significant moments in 2018, we participated in the city's wayfinding efforts and initiative. We helped with GAD, and we have results of an initial trail use statistics collection that we performed. Those statistics are, in from August 29th through September 4th, this was before the official ribbon cutting event at GAD, we had 230 bicyclists, 81 walkers, 122 joggers. That's a total of 433 users. We had to remove it early on September 7th, so are basically, and then the, in September 5th and 6th, we had rain. Both, that was over the Labor Day weekend, so we had fewer participants on those days. But on Labor Day, we had 44 bikers, 24 walkers, and 72 joggers. So again, this was before the official public announcement and official ribbon cutting, so, you know, a lot of people may not have been aware of the, the trail yet, so lots of use so far. We also participated in helping developing trail rules, and again, this presentation is for the completion of our matching grant. In 2019, looking ahead, we would like to reapply for the grant, and we're going to use that to support the city of Andover with additional trail development, trail, provide for better trail recognition, visibility, use, and support, trail safety and enhancements as feasible, and continue the routine trail maintenance in partnership with the city of Andover. We're going to also work to document further trail usage, continue our undying efforts of fundraising, and again, try to apply for additional private and public grants as available. We plan to continue fostering relationships with our state legislators, county commissioners, landowners, you folks with the city of Andover and the council, city of Augusta, and generate more opportunities for, again, trail recognition. We would like to also continue to garner support for trail development continuation on the south side of Highway 400, and we are in constant communication with KDOT regarding the pedestrian bridge over Highway 400. With that, I appreciate your time, and thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions or comments? We appreciate your efforts. We do.
Thank you.
Police and Fire Foundation.
Mr. Mayor, Andover City Council and the Andover community. My name is Wes Sawyer with American Family Insurance, and I'm here tonight as I serve on the board, as a board member and the vice president of the Andover Police and Fire Foundation. In 2017, the Andover Police and Fire Foundation kicked off the K-9 Officer Fundraising Campaign with a goal of $20,000 to fund the replacement of K-9 Officer Hondo in 2018 and K-9 Officer Thor in 2019. We received a tremendous amount of support and encouragement from the city council, Mayor Lawrence, and on behalf of the Andover Police and Fire Foundation Board of Directors, we extend our sincere thank you. After a distinguished career, K-9 Officer Hondo was retired in 2018 and is now a family member of Lieutenant Damon Kundeth. With our funding support, K-9 Officer Hondo was replaced by K-9 Officer Bandit. His handler is Officer Joel McLaughlin. K-9 Officer Thor is scheduled to retire in 2019. He was funded many years ago with a gift from Capital Federal Savings about eight years ago, and we would look for his retirement announcement sometime in 2019. Leading into the 2018 holiday season, the Andover Police and Fire Foundation K-9 Campaign, led by Tatt Shepard, was 5,000 shy of our $20,000 goal to fully fund the replacement of K-9 Officer Thor. The Heggermeister family of Andover and the Heritage Funeral Home stepped forward with a gift of $1,500 to rally the community and push us past our goal by Christmas. The Andover Police and Fire Foundation made a call to Santa, and he sure delivered. At this time, I'd like the following to join the council up front, please. Brandy Mitchell, and guest with Capital Federal Savings, the Andover Police and Fire Foundation Board of Directors, Sergeant Mickey Ferris and K-9 Officer Thor, and Captain Buck Buchanan.
Don't hurt him, Mickey.
Through many generous donations from our community, along with a $3,600 gift from Capital Federal Savings Bank, we would like, we were proud to announce the completion of the Andover Police and Fire Foundation K-9 Officer Campaign, which raised over $22,000. We would like to offer a big thank you to all of our business and community partners, and certainly Capital Federal Savings Bank. In closing, the Andover Police and Fire Foundation believes deeply in supporting the safety of our community, and this fundraising campaign would not have been possible without so many of you here tonight who chose to stand alongside with many other business owners and individuals in our community who have supported these efforts. We are very grateful for the service of K-9 Officer Hondo, K-9 Officer Thor, and what they have brought to our Andover community. We're excited to welcome K-9 Officer Bandit. He couldn't be here with us tonight, and look forward to the years of service and safety that he will provide this community. On behalf of the Andover Police and Fire Foundation Board of Directors, I would like to thank each and every one of you who saw fit to support us in this K-9 Officer Campaign. We would like to invite everyone to make a point to stop by and see us at the Andover Police and Fire Festival in Andover Central Park on Saturday, June 1st. Thank you.
All right, our next. Oh, go ahead, Brandy, I'm sorry.
Sorry, thank you. On behalf of Cat Fed, we just want to say how happy we are to donate to such a wonderful cause and continue to build our relationship with Andover and the community. And we want to thank the foundation, the Fire and Police Foundation, for everything that they do for the community. So, thank you.
All right, next up on our list is the WAMPO Long Range Transportation Plan.
Thank you. I'm Chris Upchurch with Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, 271 West 3rd Street, Wichita, Kansas. And I don't have a cute dog, so I know this is going to be a letdown. So I'm here to talk to you really about two things. Our, our main topic is the next Long Range Transportation Plan that WAMPO is working on. Mark Deiter has also asked me to speak briefly at the end about some of the nuts and bolts of how WAMPO funds projects and how that might change slightly going forward, and to get your feedback on that. So to start with, WAMPO is an intergovernmental organization. We're composed of members from around our Wichita metropolitan area, including Andover. And we do long-range transportation planning for the metro area. We also disperse about $12 million a year in federal funding, which will come up a little later. So one of the things we do is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. This is our big 20-year long-range vision for what transportation is in the Wichita region. What we're looking for today is your input on the future of transportation in that region. So I'm going to start with a quick summary of where WAMPO sees the region today, some possible futures, and then ask you for, for your input on what sort of things we should consider in the next Long Range Transportation Plan, and then we'll get to that project funding bit at the end. So where are we now? I always like to start out by talking about safety. And unfortunately, the news on that front is not great. Fatalities have been trending up since the recession, and fatalities among bicyclists, fatalities and serious injuries among bicyclists and pedestrians have been ticking up for the past couple of years. So two of our major safety statistics are headed in the wrong direction. On congestion, on the other hand, we're doing pretty good. According to our models, congestion only adds about 26 seconds to the average rush hour trip in the Wichita metro area. And we do have some localized bottlenecks. They're confined to particular areas, like the North Junction, for instance. We don't sort of have the broad-scale congestion problems that some other metro areas do, just these more localized spot problems. Can't talk about transportation without talking about money. We're envisioning that federal funding will probably be fairly flat in the near future. On the state side, the state legislature has moved a large amount of money from the Kansas Department of Transportation's budget to plug holes elsewhere in the state budget, and what we've seen over the past couple of years is that has really affected KDOT's ability to deliver projects in our region. Talk about freight. We're looking at increased volumes. We get about $48 billion worth of freight coming into, out of, or through the Wichita region, and we expect that to increase. Demographic-wise, we're a very slow-growing area, less than 1% per year throughout the metro area. We have an aging population, not just in the sense that all of us are getting older, but that as the baby boomers retire, many of them are choosing to stay here in their retirement versus moving off to Florida or Arizona or someplace like that. And that is really increasing the number of seniors in our population, which is affecting our transportation system. On the other end of the spectrum, millennials and Generation Z folks are coming into the workforce and entering adulthood. And both of those combined are leading to more single-person households and childless households. You've got the empty nesters on the older end, and then these younger folks who are waiting longer to get married and have kids. And that has effects on land use. People are maybe looking for different things and the sort of residence they want to have. Rather than a single-family home, maybe they're looking more for a duplex situation or apartment or something like that. And finally, we have an outflow of our most educated young people. President Bardo of Wichita State University likes to say, "In Wichita, our number-one export is airplanes. Our number-two export is educated young folks," and that's a problem for our region going forward. Talk a little bit about alternative modes, walkability and bicycle pedestrian stuff. These changing desires for land use, changing desires for people, how they want to get around, is leading to more people being interested in active transportation, walking, bicycling, also in transit. So those are some changes that are affecting the transportation system in our area. So what are the possible futures? These are different scenarios that WAMPO has come up with. One of them is that we might undersee some sort, undergo some sort of urban renaissance, where we see more development, both in the central core of Wichita and in more dense development in some of our outlying cities like Andover, developing into town centers. On the funding side, the future could, could go well or badly. One scenario for it going well is if, even if we have less federal and state funding, perhaps we can have some local and regional leadership that will come up with alternative funding sources to help backfill that. Of course, the other possibility is we have less federal and state funding, and we don't backfill that. We don't come up with local funding for it. And in that case, we're probably going to have to pare back what we do on the transportation side of things. And finally, the future could bring some real technological changes, things like autonomous vehicles, cars that can drive themselves. But also things like people working remotely. It may not seem like a transportation-related thing, but every person who's working from home is one car off the road during, during the commute period, and that really has a big effect on our transportation system. So what I'd like to hear from you is, what should the Wichita transportation system of the future look like? What should we be considering as we go into this plan for the next 20 years? So I'd love some feedback from the council on that, if you have any.
We're not smart enough.
Any comments?
I guess one comment based on a lot of the, I guess, the stats on the age of people and the trends of what's going on as far as millennials or Gen X or baby boomers. So yeah, you have, you have the numbers. I mean, but we're in Andover, so I guess the question would be, is there a difference between what's happening in Andover and the outlining cities than what is happening in Wichita? And if so, would we have a different look as to our transportation needs than Wichita would? Oh, you're just writing it down. You're not going to answer me?
I don't know if I can answer. That's a big question. I don't know if it's, I can answer off the cuff. Certainly, these things are going to express themselves differently in different areas. You know, some people will, because of their desires, gravitate to the central core. Some other people will like, like communities like Andover will find those suit them better. I don't know that we can say that, you know, communities like Andover would be completely unaffected by these changes. I think even out more in the suburban areas, you are going to see changing desires for people who maybe don't want to live in downtown Wichita, but maybe also aren't looking for the standard suburban tract home. So I definitely encourage you guys to think about that, and that's the sort of thing we'll be looking at in some of our planning.
And then a second one, and I'll quit asking questions, would be, so we have, again, we have ideas or trends that are happening nationally and then within our area. So a question would be, are we looking in the region or with our roads and transportation to drive what is going to happen in the future as far as, are we going to try to force more people to ride bikes or autonomous vehicles or walk? Or are we going to follow them, and as more people require it, then make those changes? If that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I certainly think we're not aiming to force people into using a mode of transportation or making choices that they don't want to. I think it's more about providing people options. And ideally, rather than sort of following them, I think we would ideally be parallel to them and get, develop these options at the same pace that people are interested in. Of course, doing that pacing is tricky.
One of the concerns, maybe that's not the right word, but one of the concerns or discussions we had on, on the board was, the WAMPO board, was when we went through the months of, of all the, the data download to everyone and then talking about trends was, okay, does this mean now that projects that we're looking to fund, are they now going to be required to address some of those concerns that we might not even think are happening yet? Being proactive versus being reactive to those. And so I feel like if we're going to talk about such a small pot of money, $12 million is tiny for this type of a thing, then just, I feel like I'd like to know more about that. Do we, is that going to affect our project selection? How it would go with whatever the trends that were presented to us were?
Yeah, that's one of the things that we're going to be working out over the next few months. Sort of what we're doing now, the part of the reason I'm here to get this feedback, is do the, the high-level vision and goals for our plan, and then those will sort of get translated into more concrete selection criteria. And we'll be talking about those to the, the WAMPO board in the, in the next couple of months.
Mayor, I've got one question for you, just from listening to what you have to say. And I want to preface this by, the lady at Artie and so forth, we're all in favor of that. But you had mentioned that one of your primary deficits were injuries on the bike path situation. And, and I'm not a bike rider personally, but I can't think of anything worse than painting onto a current street, and this five feet is for bicycles, and you narrow the street for the cars, and you don't think anything is going to happen to you. I, I just, I, it baffles me to this day that people think that's a wonderful design. And I'm hoping that's not what we're going to be doing here in Andover, because that's one of the projects that we have going. I understand that that's not what we're going to be doing, but I, I think you're just asking for major league trouble in that direction. I'm sure I'm wrong, but I'm giving you my two cents.
Sure thing, and I, you know, Les perhaps could speak to this, but I believe that Andover is pretty committed to using side paths versus, versus on-street bike lanes, like you see, for instance, in the downtown Wichita area.
Yeah, I was going to ask some clarification on that as well, because I'm assuming that you aren't really talking about biking, the dedicated biking trails that these accidents are taking place on. If it is an increase, then I would say it's just because it's an increase of number of users, and everybody does a klutzy thing occasionally on a bicycle. But if you're talking about cars and bicycles accident, then we're talking, I'm assuming, it's the ones that are on the roadways as opposed to the trails.
Yeah, the vast majority of that, particularly when we're looking at fatalities and serious injuries, those usually aren't stuff that come from just people futzing around on a bike by themselves. The vast majority of those are going to be bicycle-vehicle conflicts between bikes and cars. So you'd see those, you know, where you have potentials for interaction. Could be on-street bike lanes, could be people just riding in the roadway, could also be areas where, you know, off-street paths cross streets, and maybe we, we, you know, you have people trying to get across and cars going by. Basically, any place where you have potential conflicts between vehicles and bicyclists or vehicles and pedestrians are going to be our biggest areas of concern on that.
I'm assuming that if we have any concerns or suggestions that we would come up with later that we'd like to share, that we can just pass them on to our representative who can share with you as well.
We're happy to hear anything from Troy. We also, in, in your packet, there is a link to an online survey and email, so there are other ways you can get to us too, but we're always happy to hear from Troy.
I have one question for you. Since we're on the bike topic, and I'm all for biking. I bike, or I try to, or attempt to. But, but talking about bikes on roadways, is, will there ever be, or do you ever see a time that, that bicyclers would have to get some type of driver's license or insurance if they're on the same road as a 45 or 50 mile an hour vehicle?
Yeah, that's not really something that I've, I've heard proposed.
Yeah. I mean, you're, you're riding next to them, you're having to swerve into the other lane to go around them. And of course, you know, we all know and heard the, you know, the bikes have a right to be there, but, you know, the cars are paying for the insurance, they're paying for their tag, and the bicyclers still have the right to be there. So I'm not proposing anything. I'm just asking if, if, do we see something like that happen in the future?
Can't say I've heard of anything along those lines. That's.
Bring back a little big-picture type, I think is where you're going in a little broader strokes. My concern for Andover would be the ingress and egress off of Kellogg US 5400. We're among a lot of communities that, that's a main thoroughfare going through their town, at least in this region, anyway. And, you know, we're highly interested in, in the development of how that's going to look like. I mean, we went so far as to jump ahead of the game, and, and we did the Highway 54 corridor study and with proposals on elevations, you know, like Andover Road it created. Because that affects us, not just traffic patterns, that affects us economically, and that's a main concern to us. What's, what that road going to look like? What kind of access are people going to have getting to us? And what kind of egress are we going to have getting out of here to go other places? So from my perspective, Kellogg is, is a very broad project that we're particularly interested in.
Yeah, I was actually, I was out talking to the county commission this morning, the Butler County Commission, and I heard many of the same concerns about, about Kellogg there. So there's definitely interest.
It's going to be very interesting in the very near future, because Wichita is, you know, they're head in east, and now they're maybe talking about their, their project there at 143rd. If they get through 143rd seamlessly, because they have, they have some huge traffic pileups there, that's going to dump all the pileups at 159th and Kellogg right at our doorstep. So we're going to need to plan and prepare and have some available assistance from WAMPO to keep those cars moving, because they're just kicking, Wichita's just kicking the can down the road, and that's their city limits, and that's great and fine, but you got to understand, you know, there's 40-some thousand cars a day that are going to be kicked into a very tiny intersection, so.
Yeah, and I will say, this is, these sorts of interactions at the boundaries of different jurisdictions are kind of the bread and butter for the MPO in terms of trying to get everyone working together and.
Well, that's what, that's what we need, that's what we need.
We're happy to have your participation.
Before, because we have Butler County, we have Sedgwick County, we have the city of Wichita, we have the city of Andover, we have Bruno Township, we have Minnehaw Township. I mean, it's a federal highway and it's a state highway.
Yep, lots of state.
Lots of, lots of red tape, so. Any hope you can give us along that corridor, I, I think would be the best benefit to us long-term, so. Anyone have anything else?
All right, to the second part of my presentation, this is much more, we've gone from the very high-level stuff to much more nuts and bolts. So apologies for any sort of whiplash here as we, we go through this. Mark asked me to talk a little about how projects get funded and a particular change that we're considering making. Our policy body will be considering this at their next meeting in, in two weeks. And it's going to affect communities like Andover, so I'm happy to come out here and talk to you about it. So this is sort of the overall of how projects get developed. You have an idea that usually comes from a community, a project sponsor like Andover. It gets into our Long Range Transportation Plan that we were just talking about, the 20-year Long Range Plan. From there, it moves into our Short Range Plan, which is called the TIP, and then the project actually gets implemented. So we go from an idea to this 20-year plan to a four-year program to implementation. So the, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the 20-year plan, has to list every regionally significant project, regardless. to list every regionally significant project, regardless of who's paying for it. So for example, the, the project in Andover that you guys are doing on 159th between KTA and Central, Andover is paying full freight on that. It's not one of the, the projects that WAMPO is funding. But it is listed in our MTP because that's a very regionally significant project. Now, also in the MDP, MTP, we have a short list of projects that can potentially get WAMPO funding, get some of that 12 million dollars a year. And that's a much, much shorter, more constrained list. And every two years, when we do the TIP, we take projects from this shortlist and, and choose to provide funds to them. So essentially, that shortlist is like the menu. And then the, every two years, we choose what we're going to order off the menu. Now, we've gotten some complaints from our policy body. Well, stepping back for a second, there's, there's a trade-off in how long the shortlist is. If we have a very long shortlist, there's lots of flexibility in which projects are going to get funded, but there's a lot of uncertainty for the people who have projects on that list. You don't really know if you're going to get funded or not. You have a much smaller shortlist, you have less flexibility, but a lot more certainty. So we had some complaints recently about the way this unfolded with our last long-range plan. With our last long-range plan, our shortlist was about $72 million worth of projects, and we had about $48 million that we've spent off of that. So some ways it went smoothly, it was fairly easy to decide which projects to fund with such a small list. But some project sponsors chose not to go through, go forward with all their projects. For instance, Sedgwick County had about a $10 million project, so about one-seventh of that whole list that they chose not to move forward with. And the end result was, in our most recent funding round, we funded every available project. There weren't really a whole lot of choices, we just had to take everything that was available on the list. And that led to some complaints from our policy body about a lack of flexibility. So we're looking at ways to provide more flexibility, but that has this impact on certainty for our project sponsors. And we want to hear from communities like yours about what would more uncertainty mean for you. So, couple of options. One of them, we list about $132 million of projects on this shortlist. And we'd anticipate we'd fund about 72 million of those. So that's a little more flexibility than we had last time, but it still provides a fair bit of certainty. You've got about a 55% chance of getting funded if you're on that shortlist. Option two, we have a longer shortlist. We're looking at options from like 144 to 226 million. Again, we're taking about 72 million of those in the next six years. More flexibility, but less certainty. At this point, you've probably got less than a 50/50 shot, maybe a 30 to 50% chance of, of getting funded even if you're on the shortlist.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Stop you right there. So you have a long list. How do the projects get to the shortlist?
So every two years, we do a selection process.
Who participates in that?
Well, in terms of who's.
People.
Who's the decision makers or who's putting forward projects for that?
Decision makers.
Okay, so the decision makers, what we usually do, the, the chair of our policy body appoints a small group. Usually, it's a mixture of folks from the policy body and some more technical folks, staff folks from.
So they're taking, they select projects from the big list and put on the shortlist?
They, they select projects from the shortlist and they decide, they allocate funding to them. They're actually giving out dollars.
Okay.
And then the policy body makes the final decision. But the past couple of times.
Are they based on a certain level of criteria? I mean, they have.
Yeah, we've got some criteria, we've got essentially rules to, to judge these by. And they look at the criteria, they look at the projects, they say, this one fits the criteria, this one maybe not so much.
That used to be governed by a numbering system, maybe before your time, but that's how it started out. Is it different today?
It's a little different, but we've still got criteria.
I see, I see where you're going with the flexibility issue here, but if the list of big projects has cooled down to a list of short projects, short projects probably more meet the criteria and are probably more worthy and probably deserve to be funding, that would be the general thought, right? So why would you increase the shortlist? Just to provide more flexibility? I mean, you've already had your technical people looking at this stuff, saying, these are probably what's more impactful to, to the community, to the region, so we should move ahead with these projects. Why do you want to put more on there and just, and you're just duplicating your, your coal system here, I guess?
Yeah, I'd say, well, we're, we as staff are just trying to be.
I understand, I'm putting you on the spot.
I, I think there, some of it was the fact that we sort of ran out of projects last time we were doing this. Some of it also is there is some stuff that wasn't on the list that folks in certain, certain of our project sponsors would have liked the opportunity to fund, but it wasn't on the, wasn't on the menu, so to speak, so they couldn't order that one off of there.
Okay.
So option three is kind of the free-for-all. Any project on the WAMPO list could get, on the big WAMPO list could get funding. Maximum flexibility, but very little certainty. We're talking less than a 10% chance of getting funded, just because you got your project in the long-range plan.
Yeah, but if you did that, every project would have a possibility of funding, but they wouldn't be subject to a, a greater scrutiny than calling those down to a shorter list.
We would have to subject every project to a little bit of scrutiny, basically just weed out the real, real bad ones, including projects that don't have any WAMPO money, that, that the project sponsor doesn't intend to spend WAMPO money on. So we'd have to, have to screen everything, but it would be a pretty lenient screening. Huge amount of uncertainty on this one. So what I'm kind of looking for here is, how does the level of certainty affect Andover's ability to get projects through this process? Because what we don't want to do is say, okay, we'll provide you guys all this flexibility, but nobody moves forward with projects because actually getting one funded is such a crapshoot. So we're trying to, to balance these. And I'm looking to be able to go back to our policy body and say, well, this is what we heard from our member jurisdictions about what providing this additional flexibility you want, what impact that has on their ability to, to move these projects forward.
I think your process is pretty good right now. Maybe that second option where you add just a few more projects to cover the fact that somebody, and that's a shame, that was granted, you know, such a large amount, then decided not to do it. And so you had that money available, but then you didn't have projects that were in your queue. So maybe increase that a little bit, you know, but I would still have those prioritized through your system so that there may be, I don't, I don't know how many end up, but let's say you have 25 projects that you think are good. I, I would still have those in a, in a sense of priority that 25 is not as good as number one kind of thing.
Yeah.
So that would be my suggestion, but I would hate to see it just become a total free-for-all, because I do think then, we don't have any expectation or any idea of how we might move through with a project. And the process you're using now gives us hope that we're going to get there.
I guess, Mr. Upchurch, what my concern is, and I'll just bring it down to actual practical terms for us, is the pedestrian bridge, I know the council member Warrington who lives on the south side of Kellogg and several other people are, we're interested in that because we think that's a big part of future development. And under this system, it's been in there quite a while. But if our flexibility comes to a part, comes to a point where a larger project or what's deemed to be a more regionally significant project is decided that we need to change our priorities here, because a pedestrian bridge in Andover doesn't have near the relevance of something affecting the new stadium or, you know, some other, I mean, and, and my fear is it becomes a little bit more political instead of more strategic. I understand that this money isn't, no one is entitled to it, I get it. The thing of it is that I believe that something like that, with what we're currently talking about with Yorktown and our, that entire corridor through there is going to be a very significant project for us, and I think ultimately the region. But, you know, you go through a process of justifying this stuff, and you get it on the list, and I understand, you know, economic development has regional significance, and we, Andover can't survive without everybody else. But in turn, I would say, we're offering some major things to people who want to come and live here, in terms of a great school system, a safe city, and all these amenities that you've worked so hard to add. And we have a lot of regional significance. So I would just like to make sure that we have discussions about those things, because, you know, we have added festivals and the National Fireworks Association and the Grub and Groove Festival that are really becoming a local area concern. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's not only just for the people of Andover, that a lot of these transportation enhancements are happening, it's for the entire region. And we think we've done a lot of things to serve the Wichita area with what we're doing. You know, I don't know about every other community and how they would approach this subject, but I just don't want to lose sight of that. Only are we, you know, putting forth the money with our 1% sales tax, which we've had for 20 years, which is still a, a commitment to transportation that I think is probably the best in the area, you look proportionally. But also that we're doing a lot of regionally significant things, and I would hate for us to lose out on opportunities because a majority of people in a short span decided something was more significant.
If I could add on to that, I've been involved in WAMPO since 2005. And the staff and I have had a lot of conversations about this selection. And, and one of the things they've always, always praised Andover for is that we're planners. It's not like the candy bowl at Christmas, we don't reach in and grab a handful. We've got a plan, and we set a goal, and, and we keep projects in the queue, and we have them, the 20% match in order to do that. Some others have the candy bowl, and they just reach in and grab whichever way the political wind blows. And I'm, I'm afraid that if we loosen up any that, that it will become much more difficult for us to stay on the path, to stay with our plan. Our system has been just that, systematic. We make additions, improvements systematically, not sporadically.
What are those criteria, or some of the criterias that have to do with shovel-ready projects?
Certainly, we want to make sure that a project is going to be ready to, to get built by the time it comes, comes time to obligate the money for that. So it's not so much the criterias of screening, you're not even going to get your, your foot in the door for funding unless we're pretty confident that you're going to be ready. And it is, we do do these, these funds sort of two to four years in advance. So there, there is some time to get in there. But we do make sure these projects are far enough along, oh, sorry, that we'll be, we'll be confident that they can, can actually get built, because it's, it's a lot of trouble if that turns out not to be the case.
I guess I'd agree with Councilwoman Hale. I like your current system. And, you know, it has benefited Andover in the last decade quite a bit. So of course, we like it the way it is. But if the committee needs additional flexibility, adding a few more, I suppose, to the list in case somebody's not ready to go or changes their mind, it's probably not a bad idea. Just add, give them a little more flexibility. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn it all, all those projects on one list, that would be silly.
Chris, I, I concur with that. And kind of going back a little bit to the, the issue that kickstarted this whole thing, if I recall, there was the $10 million that was released because that project wasn't, wasn't going to happen. So the, the discussion then became, how do we use that? And I believe one of the entities had a project that they could have used it for at the time, but it wasn't on the list at all, even the shortlist. It was a brand-new project? Would that be fair?
Yeah.
So it almost sounds like the flexibility would be that if there is a project such as the brand-new project, it wasn't even, didn't have the option to be vetted for the list to begin with, and the amount of money, or any money that is freed up, that at that point, that the body, whatever body, the, the committee would be able to review it as if they were, were to, as they had reviewed all the other projects, and then recommend it and let the body vote at that point. So I guess, in my opinion, I don't, not sure why we would expand at all to ma, to bring flexibility in when really we have that option anyway. I, in my opinion.
Yeah, and, and there always is the, the option of amending the list after we've, we've put it into place.
Which we do a lot.
Yeah, in, in this case, there, there wasn't, folks who could have done that did not step forward to do that at the, the appropriate time. I'll just put it that way.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one more question. It's been a few years, but I had served on the WAMPO board prior to Troy, and I do remember some discussions that were going on that it seemed as though some people were not as happy about as I was, because I'm big on biking and trails and that kind of thing. But I would still like to see certain portions of that, of that money that you're not just ignoring, that you're looking at the pedestrian, the biking things as pedestrian crossovers and not just road, I don't know how to explain that, but, but that it's kind of proportionately looking at different projects.
And, well.
But some people, I think, wanted to kind of like do away with all the pedestrian stuff. And I'm like, that's not good. You know, we, we want that to keep going, so.
Yeah, there, there's a certain fraction of our money, about 5% that we have to spend on bicycle pedestrian stuff, but we do have the option to spend more than that.
Spend more, but you want to keep that, at least that requirement in that you have to do.
Yeah, and, and we'll actually be talking some about how we want to divide this among various, various types of goals at the next policy body meeting, along with, with the more specific issue that I've, I've talked to you about today.
I have a question for you, or a statement, basically. It sounds like you already have kind of flexibility, according to what I've heard from Troy, in there already. So I would, you know, suggest just keeping it the same and just vetting those ones that come in at the last minute if, if you need them or not. And then the other thing is, what Mark was talking about is our pedestrian crossover, you know, that's, that's something that's pretty high on my list to see, because, you know, no one can walk across Kellogg. And obviously, we do have, you know, a, you know, a part of the town that's south of Kellogg too. And we have, there's developments and stuff that will be going in at some point on the north side of Kellogg that would connect to the south side or to Dillens and restaurants. And, and I think that's something that we would like to see pretty high on our list.
All right, any, any closing remarks?
Thank you very much for all this feedback. I will be taking it back to our policy body when we're discussing this in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Appreciate you showing. Okay, item 7.4, the YMCA, 18 results and 19 renewal.
All right. Good evening to you. My name is Holly Haja, and I'm the Corporate Wellness Director at the YMCA, and I help to coordinate your program with our coach and with, with Jennifer as well. Here to talk about highlights of your program from this last year. So you've been with us for seven years now. And we provide, for those of you that are new in the room tonight, we, we provide healthy lifestyle coaching, wellness committee facilitation, wellness challenges, wellness presentations, the YMCA corporate membership discount. We also provide biometric screenings and the health risk assessments as well. Your total memberships this year are, are steady. For the past seven years, you had an average of about 35 memberships every year, and that's still the same this year as well. You had your second annual Columbus Day Wellness Fair this year. The difference with it this year was that was held at the YMCA in the, in the morning for physical activities. Then employees had their healthy lunch and healthy vendor time, as well as those biometric screenings that happened during that week as well. Good feedback from employees on having that at the Y this year from the survey. With those biometric screenings, you had 43 employees participate, which was the same as last year. The, on, on the whole, the aggregate group reduced obesity by 14%. So you had a 51% obesity risk last year, that brought that down to 37% this year. I'd like to say that was due in part to some of those weight challenges that we had this year, the, the city's challenge, which I'll talk a little bit about, but then also our holiday weight challenges as well. Jamie, our, our coach, came out and did some ongoing weigh-ins with you, so I think that may have just been on people's minds more this year. You had, with those screenings, you had two cohorts. You had a cohort from 2017, 18 of 21 employees. So within that year, we saw twice the initial cohort. now meeting fruit and vegetable intake guidelines. You had 48% improved overall wellness, 43% increased physical activity, and 29% started coping better with stress this year within that cohort. In the second cohort, which is from 2014 to 2018, I like to look at those because that's where you see that the long-term progress of employees and how they make those gains. Anytime we're dealing with behavior change, that's a small process of making small but very consistent steps over a long period of time. So with the second cohort, you had also 100% improvement. That initial cohort, twice the amount of that cohort are now meeting healthy weight guidelines. Twice the amount of that cohort are now meeting normal blood pressure guidelines. 73% lowered their cholesterol by at least 2%. And 67% lowered blood pressure, total cholesterol, and triglycerides by at least 2%. So those numbers look pretty good there for the cohorts. You had one less high-risk employee, one less, a total of 26 high-risk employees this year. 73% of those employees are taking action steps towards those, working to improve those numbers versus 57% last year. This is based on coach reporting. So for the aggregate population as a whole, kind of moving away from the cohort, our focus that we're discussing this year for 2019 is on diabetes prevention and high blood pressure based on some of the aggregate results there. Jennifer also reported to me that there was a 3% decrease in cost this year from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we like to hear that as well. So the city's challenge, so this year, City of Andover and City of Goddard competed in a weight challenge. And City of Andover won. So kudos to you. Parks lost 45 and 1/2 pounds, police lost 28, streets lost 26, and City Hall lost 18. So City Hall might want to kick that up this year. I know you said a lot in City Hall, so I get it. It's my problem, too. So, but overall, 78% maintained or lost weight with that challenge. And that was the highest participating challenge I've been with in my position for a couple of years, and that was the highest participation we've seen for any challenge within the last two years. Something we were trying to improve.
And I'll just say that I may have sent donuts to the City of Goddard during that challenge.
By the way, I was out at City of Goddard yesterday or the day before, and they say game on. So that's going to be on again for this year, and we like that. We want these challenges to be internal and unique and things that employees really want to do, and that's paying off this year. Incentive program, 39% met their goal. An employee sets a goal with a healthy lifestyle coach, and they meet at least four times. We had a little bit of difference in participation. So it did bump our percentage of success up this year, but no matter what, we're looking to improve that percentage of success next year as well. The annual wellness survey, 59% of your employees completed that, which was an increase from 48% last year. Over half of the program participants feel that the wellness program has, number one, improved their attitude towards wellness; number two, influenced them to change behaviors; and, number three, positively changed the workplace culture. So in conclusion here, we like to, in our annual report meeting, put together goals for the next year. We did meet some goals this year, which is great, but that doesn't mean that we become sedentary. So we are looking to increase our successful goal-setting from last year. Also looking to continue repeated coaching interactions with additional follow-up with those who have only, may have only had one or two interactions with our coach. We're also looking to increase challenge participation, continue to contact 100% of employees with those high-risk values to mitigate those. And then our last, kind of low and unusual intention for this year is to coordinate the free diabetes prevention program with the Andover Dillens. It's for those employees who might be able to benefit from that. So that is all I have. Thank you for your time and your relationship. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything to add there, Jennifer?
The 2019 renewal is included on your consent agenda, and the YMCA has been gracious to leave the rates flat. So we continue to get the same awesome service every year, and they haven't increased that, so we appreciate that.
Excellent.
It is a budgeted item.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. 8.1 through 8.13.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.13 as presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine. I believe we're talking about the annexation of Yorktown Parkway and US 54400. Includes bicentennial, right?
That's correct, sir.
And this is not an ordinance as recorded here. This is a resolution. Is that correct?
Setting the... Yeah.
Okay. Lance, welcome.
Thank you. So as you guys know, in October of 2018, we held a public meeting where we invited all of the property owners and residents of this area, generally located at the northeast corner of Yorktown Parkway and US 54400, mainly to solicit some feedback and kind of let them know with some initial plans. Ever since that time, staff has been working on producing an annexation investigation or report and an extension of municipal services plans as required by state statute. So my goal tonight is to kind of summarize what's in that report to hopefully facilitate conversation, your guys' consideration of a resolution to indicating intent to annex and setting that public hearing for April 9th. So as part of the investigation portion of that document, we really concentrated on kind of the basis for annexation. So the first step in what we looked at was what allowed the city to pursue a unilateral annexation of the properties in this area. As you can see here on the exhibit on the left, you know, a number of different properties are colored, have a yellow overlay, and a number of those have a red overlay. So each one of those properties, the two different colors, qualify for unilateral annexation under a different statute. So all the color, or all the properties that you see in yellow are platted properties that currently adjoin the city limits, thus making them eligible for unilateral annexation. The red properties are unplatted properties, where at least 2/3 of one boundary line adjoin the city, thus making them eligible for unilateral annexation. You'll notice some properties in here that have zero color overlay. These are unplatted properties that don't satisfy that second that you see here, where 2/3 of a boundary line adjoin the city. Pending the outcome of this, what we're calling the first phase of this annexation, they are considered, are being considered for Phase 2, which will start, will start those proceedings again, pending the conclusion of what happens in Phase 1. So outside of whether or not these properties qualify for annexation under state statute, we also, at the City of Andover, have a policy that was created to guide staff in identifying properties for potential annexation. I'm not going to read the details of all of these different statements that are found in that policy, but we did take a look at which of those statements specifically apply to this specific annexation. So Statement 1 in that policy really deals with... It states the assumption that properties within a direct proximity to the existing current city limits have, they enjoy benefits based on that proximity. And we feel that directly applies to the property, to the subject properties. The second really deals with the impact that properties within this close of proximity to the city limits have on the general development of the area, not necessarily just the development of the subject property or redevelopment of the subject properties themselves, but in the general area. Three, in a very lengthy way, states the fact that the city believes in this policy that it should have oversight over development or redevelopment in areas that are in direct proximity to the city limits. And then the Statement 6 is part of this policy, states that staff, tasks staff with trying to identify areas for annexation that comply with the adopted comprehensive plan. So all of this is described in more detail in that annexation report, but that's kind of a quick synopsis of how it applies, how this annexation proceeding applies to both state statutes and city policy. So following up on Statement 6 there, this exhibit here shows pretty clearly that the proposed annexation indicated in those red squares complies with the 2014 to 2023 comprehensive plan. The one on the left is included in the city shaping chapter of our adopted comprehensive plan, which basically sets forth the goal, the task, to do as much as we can to harmonize the city limits for a number of benefits that come with that. So you can clearly see in that red square there that the properties proposed for annexation fall within those projected city limits that were developed as part of that comprehensive plan process. Furthermore, in the comprehensive plan, so the exhibit on the right here identifies nodes or corridors or areas of significance going forward over the next 10 years that staff should really pay attention to and how those develop. So again, you can see the direct proximity along US Highway 54400. That's obviously a major corridor of importance for the future development of the city. There's also a node, so an area there that deserves special attention from staff. Directly north from the subject properties, you see another node at Central and Prairie Creek, and also Central and Andover Road. And then obviously, with the recent development that's been talked about in terms of the construction of Yorktown Parkway, not only from Central to Douglas, from Douglas to, or from the highway to Douglas, and then from Douglas to Central, staff has really been looking at the development along that as a corridor. Not specifically identified in the comprehensive plan, but a lot of the same planning principles that come along with corridor planning are, we're being, we're using to kind of guide the development and construction of that road. So as adopted, obviously, into the comprehensive plan is the US 54 corridor study. That was completed in 2011. So again, the red square here indicates, delineates the subject properties and clearly demonstrates that the properties proposed for annexation are a major portion of the goals and the priorities set in that US 54 corridor study. So this is as far back as I could get an aerial picture for Andover, so nearly 28 years ago. As you can see, again, the subject properties are identified within that red square. Kind of your furthest, most west portion of this picture is 159th Street. And you can see, without me pointing out here, that there's between 159th Street and the western boundary of the annexation properties, there is a large amount of undeveloped land at this point in time. So if a development wanted to come in and develop on one of these undeveloped pieces of property, there was still a large chance, a heavy chance, that there was going to be a natural buffer between these subject properties and any sort of development that would occur. So fast forward 28 years to 2017, which is the latest, and you can see the built environment in Andover has changed substantially in that time. So you have the Green Valley Residential Subdivision that is filled in quite, is almost completely full directly adjacent to 159th Street. You look north of the proposed annexation boundary, and you'll see Andover Central Campus, and you'll see Andover Central Park. You look south to the, of the annexation boundaries, you have Marketplace Commercial, you have Sunstone Apartments, you have the YMCA, you have the Far Ha Sports Center. And if you look at this picture, there's one large, arguably one large portion of undeveloped property that separates Andover as we know it now and the subject, and the proposed annexation properties. But as you guys know, there's, we're moving dirt on the construction of Yorktown Parkway as of now. You drive by and you see work that's happening there. So with the construction of Yorktown Parkway and then the adjacent private development of this one last large undeveloped property, essentially, development in Andover over the past 28 years has now reached the boundaries of the subject properties for annexation. And that's important for a number of different reasons. Along this US 54 corridor, any future development outside of some small infill properties that still are available within this corridor are going to have to continue to move east. Without the annexation, or without considering the annexation, what you're essentially creating is the opportunity for this, for this bicentennial, this general area to be an island within the City of Andover. There are a number of different reasons from a planning, from a service provision, from an efficiency standpoint, where islands within municipal boundaries are not something that are preferred. So development history is also a major part of what we explore in the annexation investigation portion of the document that you've received. So outside of kind of establishing the basis for annexation and kind of taking a look at some of those trends, we start to get into the extension of municipal services plan, which again is a requirement by state statute for unilateral annexations. I'm not going to read every service that the City of Andover provides. You guys are well aware of those. But we, in these situations, tend to take a categorical analysis of the types of services that we offer. So we've split these into social, cultural, and recreational, and you can briefly see what some of those are that we're talking about. Public health, safety, and sanitation. And then a lot of times, the most, the most immediate or the most noticeable are the physical infrastructure. So in that report, we have detailed analysis for each one of these services. So when you talk about social, cultural, recreational, and public safety services that we as a city provide, there are a lot of different factors that you've got to consider in terms of the level of services that we provide. A major function of all of these is the proximity to those services. So this, what this exhibit is showing here is to the center of the subject properties for annexation, they are in very close proximity to the centers of those services that we provide. So I know you can't see what I've written here in the exhibit on the left, but we're less than 1 and 1/2 miles from Andover Fire Rescue Station 1. We're less than a mile and 1/2 from the Police Department Headquarters. So when you talk about public safety, which is definitely, the level of service experienced by people from those services, definitely, a large portion of that is proximity. When it comes to some of the social, recreational, and then some of the other things that we provide citizens, the center of these subject properties is .6 miles away from the center of Central Park. The development of Yorktown Parkway, where this neighborhood will have access to, is approximately a half a mile walk to Central Park. It's a half a mile walk to the Capitol Federal Amphitheater. It's a half a mile walk to the Andover Public Library. So proximity-wise, the levels of service that they're available to have is potentially fairly high. So in terms of the physical infrastructure, the area is already, and you can see on the left, is a system map, more or less, of the sanitary sewer system. It's currently served by the City of Andover. They have City of Andover sewer service. They do pay an out-of-city sewer rate, which we'll talk about here in a second. But there is no need, based on annexation, for the city to extend these services, either off-site to bring that service to the area or internally. It is currently served. The, the exhibit on the right, which you can kind of see, is, is a depiction of the current water service that's available in the area. Um, for the large majority of the properties, excuse me, in this area, there is no public potable water supply. So presumably meaning that most of these properties are served by private water wells. Going back to two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and continuously, we've, we've received comments and, and questions and inquiries from property owners um, about the extension of public water supply based on some of their concerns they have with the efficacy, long-term efficacy of their private wells. Um, not to mention the costs that they have to continue softening the water and, and things of that nature. Um, last time that I can tell, city staff looked at that and engaged residents there. Um, it was, it was, it came to the conclusion that the extension of public water from the city of Andover is impossible without annexation. Um, so in order to extend water, annexation is, is a requirement. Lastly, in terms of physical infrastructure is the transportation network. Um, users of property within that network, outside, everything you see on this map minus Highway fifty-four and some of the internal streets that you see and what within that red are City of Andover-owned and maintained street, streets and roads. So it is very hard for a resident to utilize, to access their property without first using, at some point, using City of Andover infrastructure. So infrastructure that's paid for by City of Andover taxpayers and maintained through City of Andover taxpayers largely. So again, as part of the required information, we have to include in these reports and extensions of Municipal Services Plan. We again, put a summary table in here to, to kind of organize this. Um, as you can see here, most of the internal streets within the neighborhood are gravel. Um, drainage is primarily open ditch, obviously, there's not curb and gutter drainage. The potable water and fire protection, I guess you can classify that as fire protection, but i- it's gonna be private wells and then, um, you know, uh, tenders and other things like that that can come in and, and provide, uh, uh, fire protection. Sanitary sewers already serve, no extensions necessary. Priority one for us, as we've presented it in this report, is the extension of potable water service into the, into the area. That's what we've been told from residents is one of them, their, their priorities. Um, so that, we have actually put an estimate on there in order to extend that, extend water service in there. And you can see that number there for drainage, paving of roads, all of those. Those are all projects that obviously will be, you know, would be supported by city staff, but it, a lot of that depends on the petition process and, and all of what goes along with that. Notably, this is all internal infrastructure. Like I said earlier, there is no required off-site infrastructure. As part of the Yorktown Parkway project, a water line is included in that with preliminary extensions underneath the road that, so it is ready to be served with potable water supply, pending all the other things being worked out. Lastly, as with all annexations, financial implications are always something that people will, will pay a very close attention to. And it's probably one of the more unique features of this annexation case. So the average appraised value for a residential property out of the ninety-one properties that are included in this phase is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So you can see under that current column, um, compared to the upon annexation. So once those tax units switch, you're looking at an approximate increase in annual property taxes paid of two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, now, like I said, they have sewer service with us, and they're charged fifty-three dollars a month at the out-of-city rate. In-city rate is thirty-five dollars, so that's an eighteen dollar a month deduction, which equals to a two hundred and sixteen dollar savings annually. Uh, we have heard from residents outside of the city of Andover that pay up to seventy-five dollars a quarter for recycling and trash service. Upon annexation, they would be available, or they would be eligible to participate in the recycling and trash service, uh, you know, that in-city residents are, are, uh, you know, enjoy. So that's an additional possible savings of a hundred and twenty dollars annually. You equal, then yes, there is a stormwater utility fee that we charge. Um, most of these properties, again, are residential, most of these properties are less than an acre. And if, you know, there's a, there's a scale of charges there, but predominantly, what you're gonna see is a two dollar a month charge for a stormwater utility fee, so an increase of twenty-four dollars. Add all that up, upon annexation, property owners in the area will actually more or less receive a, a, a reduction in what they pay for services and property taxes of fifty dollars a year. So with all that being said, that's, I've tried to dilute that report and extension of Municipal Services Plan into what I've just talked about there, there's a lot of details. But what Steph is recommending is the consideration of a resolution indicating the intent to annex these properties per applicable statutes and setting a public hearing for April ninth, um, at seven PM, where that is the date where the ordinance to complete the annexation will be at, will, will be, that's when that, that consideration will actually be held. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions or comments that you guys may have.
I have one.
Sure.
To your knowledge, are there any non-conforming zoning uses out there?
Yeah, uh, specifically, I couldn't give you a specific ad, but yes, there are some that I'm assuming we're probably going to have to investigate further.
Question two, um, are there any pit bull owners in that neighborhood?
Uh, no one specifically has said, "I have a pit bull," and I needed to know what you guys are gonna do about that. I know that has been a topic of conversation at sta, at the staff level to see what we're gonna do. I know there, a gentleman in the back who's been at the Planning Commission when we've considered this has raised this question as well. Um, no definitive answer, working with the Police Department, other staff, on what our plans are to, to handle that situation.
Mr. Mayor, I thought at one of the meetings, we indicated to people, because there were a couple of people at a meeting who did say they had pit bulls, that there would be like a grandfather situation, that we weren't going to be able to, we would not say that someone was going to have to get rid of their dog.
I don't, I don't know that we ever decided anything, I do recall, I do recall the comments.
We didn't do a count of vote, but that is what we were telling people that night. So I do know that audience heard that, because I heard it, so.
Oh yeah, well, I mean, that's definitely been a, a, a topic of conversation, but we do have, you know, a little bit of time to finalize that, because the way the statute's written is on, if there is a, a, an adoption or an adoption of this resolution, we can't have that public hearing to where we're finally considering that annexation for, it's gotta be held from between sixty and seventy days, hence the April ninth.
Yeah, that's my question, why is the publication day so long?
I think it's, I mean, once that annexation, once you guys, if you do adopt that resolution, there are a number of different notifications that we have to make, not only to residents, but also to different taxing jurisdictions. And I believe, I don't know, the nexus or the originating kind of, you know, of that sixty to seventy days. I am making the assumption it's for time for people to really digest what's in those annexation reports and plans.
Okay, so you're asking us tonight to approve this resolution, setting a public hearing date for, uh, April the ninth.
That's correct.
To discuss the, uh, the annexation.
And this is only part one, right?
Correct.
Okay, and part two will come
It's public hearing.
After that.
So, in, in order for us, it's gotta meet those, those statutory conditions that we talked about at the very beginning of the presentation. Before we can, before you can consider the adoption of a resolution to declare your intent to annex, those properties have to meet those conditions at that time. So following, you know, eventually speaking hypothetically procedurally here, if you get to the public hearing, you adopt an ordinance, once that ordinance publishes and that annexation is effective, we can start phase two, the phase two process.
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt a resolution indicating the intent of the governing body of the City of Andover, Kansas, to annex certain land pursuant to KSA twelve dash five twenty A one and twelve dash five twenty A six and setting the public hearing for April ninth, two thousand and nineteen at seven PM to be held at the Andover City Hall.
Second.
Uh, let's go, motion by Troy, second by Brian, to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion.
I have just one comment that, uh, that was a magnificent presentation by Lance. He obviously have a very good understanding of the subject matter. Very much appreciated.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, wayfinding policy and master plan.
You get me again.
I take it all back.
Gave me that compliment too soon. Okay, so pedestrian wayfinding policy and master plan. In the summer of twenty eighteen, um, based on some grants that we were able to receive from WAMPO, um, we were able to start the process on the development of a wayfinding, a pedestrian wayfinding pla, uh, policy and a master plan. Um, as part of this, a steering committee was, uh, was created. So we selected a design consultant, Jonathan Mugman Design, who's out of Kansas City. Has worked on pedestrian wayfinding plans for London, uh, all kinds of different places. I can't remember all the ones. So he's a, a very well-versed in pedestrian wayfinding systems, then obviously supported by City of Andover staff. Arti, our friends at Arti were, 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 uh, very active participate, participate in these meetings. Uh, the school district was involved, and the Andover Chamber of Commerce was also a part of that steering committee as well. So the first order of business as part of this project was to kind of develop a policy, um, look at kind of conceptual plans. So the first step that we embarked upon was to really look at the existing conditions within the city. So existing conditions, we're talking about open pathways. Um, we're talking about planned pathways that are in our comprehensive plan. We worked fairly, fairly diligently to identify, and I know you really can't see it here on, on the overhead, but there are a number of different, uh, what we termed, uh, points of interest or destinations that we might wanna consider actually directing to, directing people to with the, with this signage. Another major portion that we emphasized throughout the policy development portion was how do we choose which destinations not only exist now, but in the future, when new destinations are brought on, how do we choose which one of those in an objective fashion, um, are we going to include on these signage? So we spent a considerable amount of time, and I, I won't walk you through that hierarchy, but it's basically looking at, uh, you know, is it publicly accessible? Is it on a public trail? Obviously, that seems like something we might want if we're gonna sign the trails. Is it civic or recreational? Um, is it a public service? Does it provide, does the destination provide a public service? And then strangely enough, we identified museums as a, as a specific one. Um, and then if it doesn't fit all of those things, it doesn't have to be a public entity or a public destination, but that last one, is it regionally significant? Do we want somebody, do we wanna point somebody to a regionally specific, you know, regionally significant park or shopping center or things like that? So that kind of constituted what that policy and what that, uh, destination criteria kind of entailed. From there, we got into the actual construction of this pedestrian wayfinding master plan. Um, and three main things are included in this plan. So it's identifying these trails, um, branding these trails, coming up with sign topology, um, or sign design more or less, and some of the proposed locations along those trails. And then our consultant did do a cost estimate, which we'll talk about a little further towards the end. But as you can see to the left of this slide here, these are the trails that were, were, were ultimately identified. You have the Red Bud Trail, you've got an Andover Trail that runs along Andover Road, Central Trail, and then a North Loop. Um, those are the ones that are identified as of now. So once trails were identified, we spent a considerable amount of time looking at the design of the signs, what types of signs that we would have, uh, what they might look like. So things from information hubs, which is your furthest left, all the way to pavement markers and pavement graphics, um, trail markers with mileage on them, so you know where you are on the Red Bud Trail, and you can choose to utilize that information however you want. Finger post signs that, uh, are gonna be your directional signs. So when you come to an intersection and you wanna deviate from the Red Bud Trail to the North Loop in order to get to Andover District Stadium or one of the other destinations, it'll give you some, some navigational, uh, tips more or less. Then once we had the routes identified, and then we had the sign topology that actually narrowed down, we finalized those. This is a, a, a master map of where signs are gonna be installed and what types of signs are gonna be installed at those locations. And then lastly, our consultant did provide us with a cost estimate. As you can see, that cost estimate at the very bottom is a fairly large number. Um, staff, since this was complete, uh, working with obviously the, the Department of Public Works, do think that substantial cost savings can be found in a couple of different ways. So we're currently researching, um, as you can see here, this is, these costs are based on contracted fabrication of these signs. So going to a street, a, 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 a street sign producer, having them produce it, and then also contracting the installation of these signs. We are in the process of currently looking at how we can produce these signs in-house, and then obviously install these in-house with city staff. Um, additionally, so I, we're anticipating quite a bit of cost savings by being able to do that. Additionally, um, we are also looking at, through that process, looking at not only producing wayfinding signs, but also producing some of our, uh, the more regulatory street signs, stop signs, things of that nature, to also kind of realize some additional cost savings as well. So this is the consultant cost estimate, we're considering, we're, we're anticipating it to be significantly less of a, less of a number, once we get some of those, um, hard numbers back when we're looking at equipment purchases. So staff is, is recommending the approval of the wayfinding policy and the master plan. So any questions or comments, I will definitely try to answer.
Can you be more specific as to what kind of a reduction, and you're saying significant? And so are we looking at possibly a hundred thousand? Are we knocking off seventy, you know, what's the ballpark idea of what you think it would cost if we're able to do this all in-house?
I, I probably defer to less on some of that. Him and Rick have both been looking at the in-house production costs.
Guesstimate of materials, maybe, maybe a third of that price would be a material cost.
And we also have
Reduction, if you're talking knocking seventy-five percent or sixty-six percent of it off, okay.
And we've also talked, and we, we brought up some concerns with that, with the consult, as part of that process. And I mean, a phased approach definitely is something that we would look at as well. So whether that's doing all of the Red Bud Trail signage at first, or, um, however we wanna phase that one sign type, you know, for example. So there are different ways that, uh, that we can manage that.
So being a part of that committee and recommending this too, um, even the a hundred and eighty thousand dollar number, while it is significant, I mean, it's a investment in the quality of our trails and, and what we're looking for in the city. And while it might seem like a big number, I really don't think it's a big number. To be able to save that much, obviously, is tremendous, but even if we weren't, I would still recommend it as is, for what it's gonna accomplish in the city.
And I'll say, there's no, I mean, the city of Wichita has some pedestrian wayfinding in some areas of their downtown areas, some on their portion of the trail. Um, but there is no community in this area that has a developed pedestrian wayfinding program as well.
This would not be part of the dedicated sales tax kind of cost then. This would come somewhere else from our budget or not, would it be?
You looking at me or Donna?
It could potentially come out of the one percent.
So it could potentially, okay, I, I could lean that way, but I just didn't know what the rules said, so I, I could justify that.
Have to ask and get an opinion on that, but.
I understand that too.
Very lenient and favorable opinion.
Before I use anything questionable out of the one cent sales tax, I always confer with our auditor.
Right. Looking for an opinion. Okay, thank you. So, um, you're gonna bring us something back then, obviously?
Yeah, it's no, there's no-
There's no action item here, right?
Right. Was there supposed to be-
Tonight, you would approve the policy and plan, and at a later date, we'll come back to you with some ideas on, uh, materials and equipment to start implementation.
Okay.
I would make that motion.
Second it.
Motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the wayfinding policy and master plan as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna ask this one time, does anybody need a break? Moving on to item eleven. Public water system. Force an ordinance here?
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, but when we've gone through this Lafayette Herman project, uh, planning and the Yorktown project planning, it was always in there that we had a water line, but unfortunately, I didn't tell our city attorney or bond council that we were gonna need authority to issue debt on that. So, luckily, here at the last second, when we're getting ready to do all this, I remind, I said to him, can we pass an authorizing resolution so we can have the authority to issue debt on this? And I think he's gonna say it's okay, so, uh, that's, uh, that's essentially what we're putting together here.
Looking for a favorable opinion.
Yeah, it's an ordinance, though.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to approve this ordinance, authorizing the water system improvements related to Yorktown Parkway and Lafayette Herman?
We definitely need to issue debt on this as, you know, obviously, our waterfront couldn't handle this type.
So, move. Second.
Motion by CR, second by Troy to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street Improvement Project.
Following up on the discussion about WAMPO and how we select projects and prepare for projects, you'll see that this project is, uh, scheduled for funding in federal funding year of twenty twenty-two, so about three years out, we need to start the engineering on the project. And the first step to that engineering is to solicit area consulting engineers to gauge their interest in our favor in selecting an engineering consultant for preliminary engineering. We'd like the council to authorize us to start that process in order to, uh, keep up with that twenty twenty-two schedule.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize staff to solicit qualifications for consulting engineers to perform preliminary engineering for the Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street improvements from Central Avenue to US fifty-four slash four hundred and begin negotiating a contract for services.
Motion by Greg, second by Caroline to authorize staff to solicit the qualifications for the, uh, project as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen. Unified Development Plan Phase Three.
The last phase of the UDM project is the adoption of all the ordinances, bylaws, and the creation of all of the forms that we use for applications, for instructions, for checklist for the members, for checklist for staff. Again, this is the last phase with the Foster's five thousand dollar fee. We are happy to be at the end of the, end of the project and within a few months be one hundred percent complete and on the website.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agreement with Foster Design Associates for Phase Three for the development of the Unified Development Manual in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to approve the agreement as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will step down for item fourteen. CR, if you'd handle that one.
Paragraph, or excuse me, item fourteen, Teradyne Third Edition Engineering Contract for Sanitary Sewer. You wanna lead the way there?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. A few meetings back, you accepted the final plat for the Teradyne Third Edition, and then a meeting or so ago, you accepted a developer's agreement for the project. The only public improvements necessary are extension of a sanitary sewer. The contract before you tonight is for a consulting engineer to design the sanitary sewer project and do the construction staking and engineering.
Mr. President, I move to approve the contract with Poe and Associates for preliminary and construction engineering for the Teradyne Third Additional Sanitary Sewer Extension Project.
We got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Motion by Greg. Second by Brian to approve the contract with Poe and Associates for Teradyne Third Edition for the sanitary sewer extension, and I hope that they're nice with my home. Further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. President. So, um, with, uh, with this, um, considering there's a cost to it, and I know that when, when we do, um, improvements, that a portion is usually assessed to, um, I guess, the property owner as well as in the city covers a portion ourselves, I think, right? Is that not how it works with this?
This is a hundred percent developer project. There is no participation from the city. There's no upsizing.
Okay. Oh, why is it different than the streets? If it's still a public utility, as I would consider the streets to be-
This is designed to a minimum size to serve only the benefit district properties. It's not like it's been oversized to serve anyone else outside of the benefit district.
Okay. All right. Answering the question, thank you.
Can't complain about that, huh?
Oh, yeah, no. Can we please play someone?
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
For what it's worth, Troy, I loved your idea there. Item fifteen, Andover Road Bike Pedestrian Path.
I wish Chris from WAMPO would've stuck around to see that we're, we're on the second phase of this Andover Road Bike Ped. This is the, the contract for that preliminary engineering to design the bike ped path. Uh, we've accepted the consultant's letters of interest, reviewed those. The committee recommended Garver LLC, local firm, to design, and we have a contract before you tonight to begin that preliminary engineering.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the contract with Garver LLC contract for preliminary engineering services for the Andover Road Bike slash pedestrian path project from Central Avenue to US fifty-four slash four hundred.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by CR to approve the engineering contract as presented. Further discussion?
Um, I have a question for last. Where exactly is this going?
It would be on the east side of Andover Road between Central and US fifty-four.
Okay.
This tees up your project for the pedestrian bridge across Kellon.
Okay, good.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen. Fire Department UTV Purchase.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, I will try to do half as well as Lance, but no guarantees.
Long as it's not as long.
I, I will, I will keep it quick. So, to be clear, when I mentioned a UTV, nobody was, knows what I'm talking about, so I used the phrase side by side, and nobody knows that either. A product name that you might be familiar with is a gator. So, what we're actually looking at is a mule, which is a different type of, uh, it, the same product as a gator. The reason I'm coming to you tonight is twofold. One is we have a serious need for this equipment. And secondly, um, not only am I not authorized to spend this much money, but this is an unbudgeted purchase. The first time I've ever brought you an unbudgeted purchase. We have a little bit of a, a, a very nice scenario that I can share with you, and that is, we've received two very nice donations from the community, one of which was a five thousand dollar donation very recently from ADT Security, and the other of which was a, uh, five thousand dollar donation last summer from a, uh, group that has asked to remain unnamed. I have fifteen hundred dollars left from the original five thousand, and I also have all of ADT's five thousand. And I would ask that we be allowed to purchase this UTV using both the donated funds, and Donna and Mark have agreed that it would be a, an okay idea. They, they approved me to mention it to you, to use reserve money to be able to pay for the remainder. The total would be fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. That did include a five percent, uh, contingency. I would also like to mention that we would, if we were to buy this vehicle, we would need to equip it, and your Police and Fire Foundation has agreed in principle to equip the vehicle for us. What questions do you have for me?
What's the approximate cost of equipping?
I said they agreed in principle, and that's because we don't have an actual estimate yet. We expect to be, uh, definitely less than two thousand dollars.
Ain't a light bar on it?
We're gonna put lights on it, not sure it's gonna be in bar fashion. We may use the, uh, micro LEDs. There, it's all gonna be LED, but we may use the micros.
Why, why do we need this now?
Thank you. I should've talked more about that. So, not only-
It's not a thing here.
I'm trying to keep it quick, 'cause the mayor told me to keep it quick.
You need to answer this question, though.
Yeah, I agree. So, not only do we have special events that these vehicles get used at, as a matter of fact, every concert, GAD, the recent fireworks show, et cetera, the fire department uses two of these vehicles every time.
Where do you get them now?
We've been donated the use of one of those each time, and the other one is actually owned by one of our firefighters. So, it's been okay to use one of your firefighter's vehicles, but I'll tell you, we've spent just a little bit of money, 'cause it had some carburetor trouble, and we were using it at the time. And I was always taught, if you're borrowing something, you're responsible for it. So, if we ever tear it up, then, uh, it's gonna be our problem to deal with. I would rather tear up our own equipment if that has to happen.
Yeah, don't tear up their equipment.
Amen, yes. So, we use these not only for the concerts, but, uh, we've talked a lot about the Red Bud Trail. If we make responses out onto the Red Bud Trail, this is the type of vehicle that we would need to access patients quickly. We have already, um, with donated money, we've already built a medical sled that goes in the back of this vehicle to, um, uh, carry patients and equipment around. In the future, we would be looking to, uh, purchase a fire suppression unit. Uh, we wouldn't be able to build that, we'd have to actually purchase that one. And, um, we would use this for large multi-day grass fires, um, in access of areas that pickups can't go, basically. So, I hope that answered your question. Uh, I have a whole list, but I don't-
That's good, yeah.
I don't think you wanna hear the whole list.
No, I meant, go ahead and tell us the whole list. No, I'm kidding.
Okay.
No, don't.
So, you would anticipate still having someone that loans this to you or donates this to you for your use? 'Cause you, obviously, if you're already can, uh, uh, using two of these vehicles, or do you're still thinking along the lines of using one of the firefighter's?
So, I would-
I like the, the other one donating so that it's not leaving some-
I would rather go that way. I would rather use the one that's donated for use rather than one of our firefighter's vehicles.
Some of the fire department or something, or?
No, it's a local business that, that, uh, sells these units.
Okay, well, that's great.
Would you need a trailer with this as well?
We would in the future. I've researched the ordinances that would allow us to operate the vehicle on the street, and we would be in compliance with those. Um, since you asked, I've checked with our insurance company, and I'll give you a, uh, ballpark answer, which is what they gave me. It's anywhere from fifty dollars to three hundred dollars a year to insure it, and that's a important piece for being able to, uh, use it on the street. For the trailer, we would use, um, budgeted funds. We think that's gonna be around fifteen hundred dollars, and we would not, I've been offered, our firefighters, uh, have offered a trailer to pull it around. We would not do that until we purchased our own trailer.
JT, why were you shaking your head?
Uh, I would just have to check. I don't think UTVs and light truck vehicles are permitted under this STO unless the city specifically permits them, and I just don't recall you doing that. That was the only question I had.
Some of those, some of those UTVs are actually manufactured to be street legal and meet all the requirements. Seat belts, turn signals.
Yeah, I don't think they have airbags. I don't think they meet-
You don't have to have an airbag to be street legal. That's not a requirement.
I'd have to see the actual vehicle. There's a specific reference to UTVs in the standard traffic ordinance that says that they're allowed if specifically approved by the city, uh, just like a golf cart. So, it's actually a separate ordinance from golf cart, but it works like that. I, I'm not worried about it. Certainly allow it. I, I just, I just don't recall you having allowed it.
So, the research that I did was the specific ordinance, and it was the one that's listed on the Andovercast.com webpage. And, um, as JT said, uh, there was a section for golf carts. There was also a section for these vehicles, so that's the list that I've been going down to make sure that we can comply with that. And if you'd like to buy me one, I'll be happy to show him, 'cause he said he needed to see it first.
Which pleasure here, Council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize the fire chief to purchase the UTV from Kawasaki three twenty-one. Equip the same for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg to approve the UTV purchase as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, Code of the City of Andover Zoning and Planning.
The Fosters were so busy working on that contract that you approved fifteen minutes ago, they've already got an ordinance here to change the planning commission membership to reflect seven members versus the current eight, and to change the appointment schedule to match the January appointments that we currently do.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance changing the membership of the planning commission from eight members to seven members and changing the appointment schedule to the last Tuesday in January to coincide with other mayoral appointment, appointments.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Brian to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen. Um, as you can see, I have, uh, switched it up a little bit this year. Uh, these are my annual, uh, appointments. All the, uh, city officials, uh, remain the same, uh, reappointments. You can see all the rest of them, uh, including the council liaison positions. Uh, note that I do have a couple opening, uh, a couple open positions on, on park planning, and, um, I'm always on the lookout for names for, for planning commission and so on and so forth, but, um, here they are in all, all their glory. I'm looking for some approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the appointments, uh, as you suggested.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by CR to approve the annual mayoral appointments. Further discussion? It's your last time to gripe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, um, city council meeting calendar. Now, I know Susan, you and I had a conversation about this after our last meeting where we talked about this, but I don't know that we, what did we not decide? It was December, right?
Well, because we were gonna push the, um, December, we didn't want any more than five weeks to lapse between meetings. So, we were gonna push the, um, we were gonna have one, one meeting on December the tenth, and that was it. And then we would push, um, the, actually not push it, but move it to January the seventh, the first meeting in January, as opposed to January the fourteenth of twenty twenty. But if we do that, we still have the seated- But if we do that, we still have the seated council as you are right now.
On the 7th?
Yes, because state statute, which Mark can explain to you, I'm sure the league is working on, but currently state statute says that the new members are to be sworn in on the second Monday of January. So, they won't get sworn in until the 13th.
My only concern again I wanna raise is now you're scheduling a meeting in 2019 that a new council really is gonna be in control, it's just a week later. I think, you know, having, scheduling meetings on the December for the 2018 calendar, fine, but I really don't think we should be scheduling meetings into 2019. That...
You mean 2018 or 2019?
Yeah, 2020, right.
I agree with you. And, you know, just counting the weeks here, it, it is exactly five weeks. It's no more than five weeks, but it's exactly five weeks, so...
But if we go back to, to what our stat, our, our city ordinance says, that our council meetings will be held on the second and last Tuesday of the month. So, that's why we go through this, so that we don't have to publish every time we're gonna change something. If you push the meeting for, to the 17th of December, move the, you'd have to move the planning commission meeting again, but that's a whole year's notice as opposed to the notice they got this year or last year because of my mistake.
Are, are we trying to avoid the 30th and 31st? Isn't that what we're doing?
Well, that's originally how it started.
We have, we have agreed to that.
Just the one meeting in December when you're going to hold that.
It seem, you're worried about, it seems like you're worried about the five...
Just worry about this 12 months and worry about January.
We can, we can talk about that in the fall, is what I feel like.
Yes, we can do that.
If you really think this is a critical issue, why don't we just schedule this on the 10th and then talk about it.
Mayor, I would approve the meeting, council meeting, minute, meeting as proposed from January of 2019 through December of 2019.
And I just wanna make sure that includes a workshop on the 9th and the 10th. Is that what that says right now?
No, we canceled the workshop in December.
That's cool, then just a meeting on the 10th and not the 17th is what we're approving tonight, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Everybody's clear, we're not moving the planning commission, we're just gonna have a meeting on the 10th and go on.
It's gonna leave you five weeks between meetings.
For now, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Because, when we do that, we're gonna, we're gonna still be having the seated council that we have now at the first meeting in January, if you need to stay, if you're wanting to stay in five weeks. But again, this could be readdressed later.
Anywho. Uh, was there a second to that motion?
Second.
All, uh, okay, further discussion. Motion by CR, second by Brian, to approve the 2019 meeting calendar. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
What did we just do?
Whatever you said. Item 20. We need to have an executive session. How long you anticipate this will take?
Really like 20 minutes, Mr. Mayor. There's just been a couple items that I think we need to consolidate.
20 minutes.
To include the director of public works, the city attorney, myself, the governing body.
Go on.
Make that motion for 20 minutes as requested.
I'll second.
Motion by Troy, second by CR to go into recess in the executive session for consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship per KSA 7543, 4319B, subsection 2. Session shall include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, the director of public works for approximately 20 minutes. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who did that? Who did the second? Mike. Good, motion by Greg, second by Mike to come out of executive session. Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? We're back in regular session. Moving on to item 21, the franchise agreement with Kansas Gas Service. Uh, just a re- looks like a renewal here.
Mr. Mayor?
Troy.
I get a motion to approve Nordons granting the Kansas Gas Service, the Division of One Gas Inc. And its successors and assigns a natural gas franchise and further setting at 6% franchise fee with the basis of and remittance of such fee detailed in such ordinance.
Second.
By Troy, second by Caroline to approve the franchise ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are down to member items. Brian, would you like to start us off?
I don't have anything to say.
Caroline?
I know it's been a long night, but I do have- first of all, uh, thank you to JT. Uh, this is quite a nice little brochure being provided by Triple Wolf and Garretson LLC, law firm that represents City of Vandover, so gotta plug in for you. But, no, thank you, this was interesting. Uh, my second question is gonna put Buck on the hot seat here. I've been getting some, um, comments from people about this, the Kansas real ID and knowing that, is it 2020? That, like, I'm looking at my driver's license, which fortunately I actually have a renew in, in this year, 2019. So, I can say I want the real ID as opposed to the one that will say not acceptable in federal admittances or-
It's not gonna affect us on our dated operations whatsoever, so it's a federal deal when you go to fly or do whatever, two forms of ID. There's so much restrictions to that, that it's confusing.
Well, I get that, but I think people are gonna be shocked if they're not- I mean, I don't know if we wanna help get the public being more aware of this. I, I, I was just kinda blindsided by it. I'm like, what are you talking about?
I had no clue until last year when I went to fly to DC and it was like, whoa, wait a minute, you know, what is this ID or what they're talking about? And I got mine done, but-
Right. Okay, so from the reading I've been doing, it's not gonna cost anything more. And if you're, if you're gonna do a driver's license renewal ahead of that required time, then it'd be smart to already go for the, the real ID. It doesn't cost anymore. You just need to have more verification of who you are when you go in.
I agree, we could probably use our social media and stuff to start blasting that somewhat as, as a public announcement. Doesn't hurt to do that at all, so it's a good point.
But is that your understanding that it, it just requires very thorough identification?
Yes, and I finally got mine done, same thing. You just have to make sure you have certain-
So, if you have a passport, that works. You also have to have some proof of social security.
Social security, or I had to use my utility bill.
They would accept a utility bill in place of social security?
I, I just remember I had my utility bill my-
No, you had to have a-
Certain things you had to have.
Utility bill for the address to match your-
Okay. The, the social security thing is kinda tricky because who in the world, they've not sent new cards, I mean, my original card's long gone, but I do get a yearly statement. Cause I'm someone that's in that range, so that helps.
I had to go get one, and you can get it in Wichita.
Okay. But if you were, but if you get a mailing from them, you know, something from social security, I would-
No, I think you have to have your card. Yeah, and you have to have your birth certificate too, if I recall.
But if you have a passport, does that take the place of the social security?
No. You can, you can find out everything you need to know on the Division of Motor Vehicles website.
Yeah, don't listen to us.
And, and if you do not have a passport and therefore are using your birth certificate and social security card and a recent utility bill, if you are a married person who has used your husband's last name, you will actually need your marriage certificate. That's the important thing for people who are-
Yeah, that's the one I was gonna add.
Because it, it won't match your birth certificate, so you'll need a marriage certificate. Other than that, everything you need to know is there. If you have a gold star on the corner, upper right-hand corner of your driver's license, you already have a real ID. It will really affect a minimum number of people because most, most people will renew their driver's license before the 2020 deadline, but there are some who do not renew until a year later who will wanna consider it.
But they didn't start using it till 2017, so wouldn't there be quite a few? I mean, that's a six-year thing.
Caroline, my wife got hers renewed this past year, and she had to go find our marriage license. And it took her days and digging and looking for it, so that was-
My understanding is it can't be a copy, it has to actually be a certified, yeah.
Yes.
Hold on, call the chief.
All right, well, anyway, I just was gonna bring that up because-
Thanks, Chief.
To get the public, if we do social, like, you know.
Moving on then. Did you have anything else, Karen? Caroline?
No.
Okay. Troy?
Um, yeah, nothing tonight.
So?
I pass. Nothing, sir.
Mike?
I just want to congratulate the police department for keeping us safe, being the fifth safest city in Kansas. That's pretty impressive. Um, I think Wichita was 30th. Yeah?
They were dead last, yeah.
I sent the chief a notice on that when he sent that out, and I said, if you're not first, you're last. He said, that's a good comment, but that's not necessarily true. Staff, have anything? Last chance.
I emailed out all the presentations, um, that were presented tonight. They'll also be in your minutes, but since they weren't in your packets, that's why.
Excellent. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
By Troy, second by Caroline, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.